So, Manual Academy is focusing on working with students this week on their own choices and what it means to be in a healthy relationship. There were several posters also given out to staff to discuss with students that really are visuals of what it means to have healthy relationships. So, if you have questions, please let me know, but I hope that as the week goes, we'll have more schools participating, but those are just a few of the schools that are doing activities this week. Thank you.
Questions of Ms. Langhoff? No questions? Okay. Any announcements?
Oh, I have one. The 2017 Kindergarten Transition Fair will be held Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Woodruff Career and Technical Center, 1800 Northeast Perry Avenue in Peoria. Parents and children can meet with their school principal, assistant principal, and other staff meetings. District staff will be available to assist with registration. To register for kindergarten, please bring your child's certified birth certificate, two forms of proof of address, and your child's health records. Same-day physicals and immunizations for kindergarten will be available during the kindergarten fair. Heart and health shuttle buses will transport parents and children between WCTC, that's at Woodruff Career and Technical Center, and the clinic. Individual primary schools also will be hosting kindergarten open house events beginning in late April. To find out the date and times, check with your school's website calendar.
Our high school juniors may be feeling a bit anxious this week as they prepare to take the SAT exam on Wednesday, April 5th. Beginning this year, the SAT exam is a State of Illinois graduation requirement. Academic Instruction Officer Tom Welsh will fill us in on how students have been preparing.
Again, our district's high school juniors are taking advantage of numerous opportunities at their high school and at community organizations like the Carver Center through tutorials and specific targeted skills to prepare for Wednesday morning's SAT exam in each school. Specific opportunities included Saturday morning prep classes throughout the district, after-school study sessions, and evening preparation. In addition, many of our students logged on to Khan Academy's online SAT prep courses. So, tonight, we want to congratulate our district's juniors for their determination and their diligence in preparing for Wednesday morning's exam. Thank you.
Get a good night's rest. Other announcements? Thank you.
The 2017 Middle School Fine Arts Festival, excuse me, will be this Thursday, April 6th, 12:30 p.m. in the main gym at Peoria High School, featuring performances by all Peoria Public School, Middle School bands, orchestras, choirs, dance troops, and displays of students' visual artwork. The performance is the culmination of a morning of workshops in which middle school students work with preparatory school for the arts, high school students, and faculty. Don't miss that. Reminder, Dr. Bob, don't make a joke about this one, it's about spring break. Reminder that spring break will begin Monday, April 10th. Classes will resume Tuesday, April 18th. District offices will be closed on Friday, April 14th.
The Woodruff Career and Technical Center, WCTC, culinary arts students, led by Chef Jetty, prepared an outstanding dinner for the school board two weeks ago. Actually, they did. This morning, the students prepared and served delicious appetizers for guests at the Illinois State Board of Education news conference at Manual Academy, including ISBE staff members and VIPs from several other Illinois school districts. This coming Thursday evening, April 6th, culinary arts students will assist Chef Jetty at the 2017 Neighborhood House Food Fight at the Peoria Civic Center. Chef Jetty will compete against 14 of Peoria's most accomplished professional chefs, including Josh Sumner of the Country Club of Peoria and Jeff Madden of Kemp 208 Main Street Grill. Proceeds from the 2017 Food Fight supports Neighborhood House anti-hunger programs in Peoria. For tickets to the food fight, got a laugh when I said it, visit www.nhporia.org. Thank you, Chef Jetty and the WCTC students for participating in the exciting event and supporting this important community initiative.
The final parent university for 2016-2017 school year will be Thursday, April 20th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Peoria Riverfront Museum, hosted by Heinz Primary School and Rolling Acres Middle School. Attendance at Parent University this year has been excellent, and each month has given Peoria Public School families the opportunity to see some of our area's most popular attractions. So, Mr. Barber and Mr. Dur, talk a little bit more about what you have planned.
Good evening. Once again, Parent University will be April 20th, and both schools, Heinz and Rolling Acres, have decorated bulletin boards behind you. The event will be held at the Peoria Riverfront Museum from 5:00 to 8:00. Barracks Cater Inn will provide meals for the evening, and buses will be provided from Heinz, Rolling Acres, Manual, Peoria High School, and Woodruff. As usual, buses will arrive on each site at 4:30 and transport to the event at 4:45.
And there'll be plenty of activities for families to participate in. They'll be viewing a short film in the theater on the big screen. They'll be able to experience the Illinois River Encounter. They'll be able to visit the IHSA area. They'll be able to tour the African-American Hall of Fame and the art exhibit. They'll be able to view the Unlocking Life's Code exhibit, and students will receive a leveled book and prize giveaways. Community agencies, including the Health Department, the library, and more will be on deck to provide information and services. Don't forget to RSVP at peoriapublicschools.org/RSVP by Wednesday, April 19th at noon. Please come out and enjoy all the Peoria Riverfront Museum has to offer. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay, thank you. The tonight's Community Contribution Award goes to Bradley University Student Engineering Organization for their outreach efforts for Manual Academy science students. Bradley University Chapter of the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers, or I believe that's SHPE, works with Manual Academy students in a variety of projects. An annual cardboard regatta project requires student teams to design and build a boat of cardboard boxes and duct tape. Duct tape. Strong enough to hold two people and survive one lap around manual pool. So, I guess that depends. Recently, SHPE students helped Manual Biology students build seed-starting kits for the Manual Community Garden using plastic soda bottles, PVC pipe, and old pallets. With us tonight is Ms. Belinda Daly. Are you here, Belinda?
Yeah.
Okay, would you, who is the faculty coordinator, and she will help us learn a little bit more about SHPE. Am I saying that correct, SHPE?
You are saying that correct.
All right, yes.
Last year, at the beginning of the year, I was contacted by a couple of engineering students from Bradley who asked me if I wanted to help them build a ship junior. And I, of course, was like, what is a ship junior? These two young men came out, and they had a PowerPoint, and they had an idea for what they wanted to do because they have an engineering club, the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers at Bradley, and they wanted to come and do a community partnership with Manual. And I was so impressed by them that I jumped on board that night, and I said, yes, I will do this, and we started it right away. So, the engineering students come out every Thursday from 2:30 till about 4:30. They come and work with my kids. We did the cardboard boat regatta. This year, we also did, and last year, the Bradley Bridge Competition, which was great because they actually had to do, use AutoCAD to design the bridges, get their templates, build them. We had two bridges this year, which was great. And then recently, the kids designed different ways of gardening. So, we made vertical pallets, and those are just going to be moved directly to the garden, and then they made a hydroponics gardening system. So, the water's whipped up right into it, so we're going to see which worked better to start our seeds. I would love to introduce the engineering students. Jacoby Thompson, please stand up. Jacoby is the one who runs the SHPE Junior program, and so all of you know, Jacoby is a Richwoods graduate as well. So, yay. We also have Megan McConney, Rodrigo Ramirez, Naieli Sida, Rebecca Gomez, Karina Perez, my son Zach Daly, Ben Juarez, and Andrew Puente. These are the SHPE Junior students. We also have Lander Braggs here. Lander is from the NSBE, which is the National Society of Black Engineers, and he worked with our physics instructor, who we don't have anymore, and that's okay because he and I are going to connect. He did the robotics with Manual. So, these are my amazing kids, and I just want to introduce a couple of kids who show up every time and go to every function, and these are my students from Manual. So, please stand up, Cara, Cameron, and come here, honey. This young lady has shown up to everything, and she danced her butt off at the SHPE Junior. Tell them what your name is.
My name's Kiandra Allen.
Kiandra Allen. All of these kids show up every time and work their butts off and help design everything. So, I'm really, really proud of my kids and this group. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I don't know if you said it or not, but in addition to working on engineering projects, the SHPE members also tutor Manual ESL students in other subjects, including algebra, geometry, and English. And Dr. Karat has token of our appreciation.
Thank you, President Ross. Well, this is really inspiring, and I know you love kids so much, and I'm really impressed with the young people coming back, giving back to society, mentoring, guiding, encouraging, motivating, inspiring. These areas are growing areas. So, we do have two small tokens of appreciation. One says National Society of Black Engineers, and then the other one, yeah, I was thinking the young.
Megan McConney.
From Bradley University. Thank you so much. Are you going to work with her in physics?
Yes.
Because that's pretty cool, yes. And then, that's important, so we'll have to work on making sure we have representation.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Will you be back next year?
Yes.
Thank you. What year are you at Bradley?
I'm a sophomore.
What's your major?
Mechanical engineering.
Awesome. Oh, wow. And you have vice president?
Yes, great. Great.
And Jacoby, okay. Jacoby, Richwoods graduate?
Yes.
Awesome, you're giving back. I'm impressed. Thank you very much. Can you continue?
Yes, I will definitely. And actually, next year, hopefully, Ms. Megan McConney will be in charge of, or will have my position currently.
So, what's your major?
I'm civil engineering.
Civil engineering. What year are you?
I'm sophomore.
Sophomore, okay, awesome. So, thank you.
All right. And since you're already out, Dr. Karat is going to do our student recognition tonight.
Thank you, President Ross. For tonight's student recognition, this is actually a unique opportunity. This is the first ever, but I am gratified to announce that the mayor artist has set aside actually some funds. It's called a Sustainability Scholarship, and I was asked to select five students, which was very, very difficult. I had about 50, but had to narrow it down because they said, okay, we only have money for five. And I was able to select, make a final selection on the following recipients. Each individual will receive $500 in scholarship, and they will be recognized at the ICAT Conference tomorrow, so that's where you'll receive your check. Is that okay? I wish I had it to give it to you right now. So, I know, I saw Elasia's mom and grandma, Ms. Buckner and Ms. Sharon, they're here. Elasia actually was, oh, you're here. I thought you were going to work and set up for the judges event tonight.
Tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow, so why don't you join us?
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, anyway, our first, first of three recipients are actually the board members. And you know what, students? One of the things I noticed when you invite me out and you're being recognized, don't forget to put that you are a board member, a student board member. That's pretty cool stuff, right? So, don't forget to do that. So, Elizabeth Laquister of Richwoods and Elasia Bates of Peoria High, and Alex, a student board member. We are recognizing these three I selected for their invaluable input and service to our district, our community, our staff, and their fellow students. So, let's give them a nice round of applause. We are so proud of you. You're going on to college. Have you, did you hear from you? University, still waiting?
No.
Yep, good, good, good. Awesome. They're all going on to college, and the goal is to graduate in four years, and some of them have aspiration actually for med school and those sorts of things. So, I know you're going to accomplish your goals, so we're very, very, very proud of you. And you're so, so very busy. A lot of you have work outside school. You're taking rigorous classes, AP classes. Some of you are in IB International Bachelor Program. Some of you are working, you have jobs, and yet you're still able to give up time to serve as board members. So, you're first class, you've been excellent role models, and you've paved the way for the next group, which we're working on in terms of advertising at the other schools. So, thank you again, and I will, I'll be with you tomorrow, and I promise you, we'll get your money tomorrow. So, then, that's three. We, I selected two additional individuals, and the other recipients, so I didn't ask you to stand, I know everybody knows you, but Elasia, can you please stand? Elasia's representing Peoria High. Elasia Bates, where are you going to school, Elasia? Have you decided?
To Mizzou.
To Mizzou? Okay, awesome. Elizabeth Laquister, Richwoods, Richwoods Senior. Liz, have you decided?
Stanford or Duke.
Stanford or Duke. Oh, wow, does a... They didn't make it. Oh, we have to wrap up quickly because the final, the basketball game is on, and none of them made it, right? And then, Mr. Sierra, can you please stand and be recognized? Have you decided on a college yet?
Yeah, I'll be attending University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign.
Awesome, thank you. So, the fourth recipient is Ravi Bongu. She's a senior also at Richwoods. I probably butchered it, and I should know better because I've had the pleasure to get to know Ravi really very closely because she's one of the Annie Gordon, Representative Jahan Gordon, Gordon's Annie's Girls program, and I knew Jahan's mom, Annie, very, very well. We worked together for over 10 years. She served as a mentor to me, and so when Representative Gordon Booth called and asked if I would be willing to participate, I said, absolutely. Your mom did, went above and beyond for me. She was part of my dissertation. I can tell you what page she said what, but I can't, you know. So, Ravi is actually one of Jahan Gordon's Booth Annie Girls. She's in that program, which really, they've identified a number of young ladies and have identified individuals in the community to serve as mentors. So, it's been a pleasure knowing you. I'm so proud of you. Also, Ravi, can you please stand? Ravi's in the IB program, and she's doing very well, working very hard. Are you going to Knox? Are you still stuck at Knox?
Either Knox or Ravi.
Okay, all right, okay. Either one is fine, so we're proud of you. And then, my final recipient, I have known this young man in primary school, and actually, Elasia also. I was Elasia's principal at Whittier. And can, Beckett, can you please stand? Beckett, I've known Beckett. I was his principal also at Whittier. He made me laugh. He was funny. He walked on his tippy toes. I remember that, and if individuals weren't doing what they're supposed to do, he always reminded me of that, but he was just always this really jovial kid that he was just a happy child to be around. And I ran into him at Richwoods at Madrigal, and I couldn't believe how much he had grown. And so, and so I'm just really proud of you, Beckett. You brought home additionally, another reason is the fact that you brought home to Peoria, Richwoods, Peoria Public Schools, a first-place trophy in the IHSA Speech State Final in the original comedy event. I was really, really impressed, and this is the first such win in over a decade for Richwoods High School. So, it just happened while I was deciding this thing came across my desk, and I said, wow, I know this kid. He's done a great job all throughout. I mean, this is an amazing accomplishment. Why not Beckett? So, let's give Beckett a round of applause, please. Would you like to do a little rendition for us, maybe three, four minutes?
Sure.
All right.
Jan!
Hey! Long time no see. What you been up to? From the looks of it, burly porcupines.
My Cajun brother who I hate. Still a pathetic unemployed actor?
Still breaking records, 911 dispatch operator with most fatalities. Jan, Joel, I'm so sorry to hear about your tabalos. I shed a tear for your family. My name is Will Executa. I'm your mother's Will Executa, but you can call me Will Executa. I bet you're wondering why I gathered you here today. I figured it was for your mother's funeral. Oh, I thought you might not know since you don't seem very sad.
Sweetheart, we're Irish.
Well, let's get to it then. Your mother's outlined a series of three challenges you must compete in order to receive your inheritance. In line with Stubs, you're going to be competing for your dead mother's money.
I'm sorry, what?
It's in the will.
No. No. No! That is too crazy. I'm not taking any part in that.
What's the matter, Jan? Are you afraid of your unemployed supernova tush?
I don't think so.
So, it's on then?
Oh, it's on.
What's the first challenge, Will? Your challenge will be present a morning exhibition of your, at your mother's funeral. Jan, why don't you go first?
All right. So, for my artistic dedication to my mother, I will be making a casserole. I'm sorry, I gotta take this thing. Hello? 911 emergency, this is Jan speaking. How can I help you? What's that? A man with a knife in his ass tried to kill you. Well, that's illegal. No, he can't do that, sweetheart. Well, tell him he can't do that, maybe he doesn't know.
Listen, hon, I gotta hurry up, day two. I'm sorry, I gotta let you go.
Ah, babe!
Is this oven for cremation? It's for casserole now. You have to honor all... Joel, it's your turn. All right, I guess I'll go then. Five, six, seven, eight. Mama! Wake up, mama! Don't die on me! Mama, I love you! I was gonna make mama's child after you! Little mom, junior? Help me, please! And scene! Dead mom. All right, Jan, I'm sorry. I'm afraid I'm gonna have to name Joel the winner of your mother's inheritance. Here's your money, Joel. Oh, Jan, in your face, in your face, in your face. This doesn't feel right. She was my mother, you're my sister, and, and I love you. But, Joel, we hate each other. That's like our thing. I know, and now that I think about it, the reason we've always been in this awful competition is because of mom. She always told me I'd never be as good as you. She always told me the same thing. You know what, Jan? Let's split these $40. And go on a spree.
Amazing. Principles, do we have parents? Parents, please stand. If we have parents, listen, Mrs. Kenny, Ms. Buckner, Grandma, Ravi's mom, dad, principals, parents, please stand, parents, 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 and did I say Mr. Elliott?
Principals?
You're hiding, come on. Any other principal? Okay. Laquister, yes. Hi, good to see you again. Hi, Mom. So, great. Aren't they amazing? Amazing? Guess what? I have, and see, you won't read that in the paper necessarily, our kids, and we have thousands of those. Thank you very much.
We want to know where Beckett is going to go to school.
Oh, yeah, Beckett, where you going?
I'm undecided.
Okay, undecided.
Dr. Bob, Bradley's speech team.
Beckett, I'm sure Bradley's speech team would love to have you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Day Treatment and Safe Schools merger. Mr. Booth and Ms. Andrews.
President Ross and board members and family and friends. I want to start off before I turn the mic over to Ms. Andrews and just to tell you a little bit about how this concept even came about. Pretty much, on a very consistent basis, I hear Dr. Karat moil over and talk about our students who are expelled from school. I remember at the last board meeting, I heard Dr. Bob talk to the public about these decisions are, do not come easy, that the community has no idea of the type of tough conversations that go on behind closed doors as it comes to expelling students. And so, one of the things that we took a look at is the current things that are in place with expelled students. Right now, we currently offer the Woodruff Safe School, and we wanted to provide a program that offers supports for students during their expulsion. And one of the models that came to mind throughout the school year... Uh, Mr. Booth and Ms. Andrews.
Dr. Kratt.
Good evening.
President Ross and board members and family and friends. Um, I wanna start off before I turn the mic over to Ms. Andrews and just to tell you a little bit about how, uh, this concept even came about. Pretty much on a very consistent basis, I hear Dr. Kratt, uh, mull over and talk about, uh, our students who are expelled from, from school. Um, I remember at the last board meeting, I heard Dr. Bob, uh, talk to, uh, the public about these decisions are not, do not come easy, um, that the, the community has no idea of the type of, uh, tough conversations that go on, uh, behind closed doors as it comes to expelling students. Um, and so one of the things that, uh, we took a look at is, uh, the, the current things that are in place with expelled students. Um, right now, we currently offer the Woodruff Safe School. Um, and we wanted to, uh, to provide a program that offers supports, uh, for students during their expulsion. Um, and one of the models that came to mind, uh, throughout the school year consistently was the model that Ms. Andrews has put in place at our day treatment program over at Treewind School. Um, the structures that she puts in place, the, uh, the training that, that she, uh, puts in place with her staff, and it's, it's just a wonderful, uh, one of the, one of the, the areas of Peoria Public Schools that doesn't get talked about, that has a number of successes, uh, day in and day out. So we wanted to kinda, uh, expand on the successes that Ms. Andrews has already put in place at day treatment to be able to serve more students and to include our, uh, Woodruff Safe School students. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Andrews to kinda talk about, uh, this concept of the Treewind Therapeutic Program.
Good evening. Um, first of all, we work together to come up with a mission for the Treewind Therapeutic Program, and it is to enhance the social, emotional, and academic development of all students while providing them with effective supports and services to reach their full potential. A few goals of the program, um, that we have established, uh, first and foremost is to improve student social and emotional development, to reduce recidivism in expulsions, individualized behavior and academic supports would be provided to the students, and then staff and community partners would be able to collaborate. Next on the list, um, is you must have a dedicated, dedicated therapeutic staff, and that includes administrators, teachers, psychologists, social workers, counselors, children's home therapists, teachers aides, school resource officers, and of course, Unity Point and School Health Clinic. The day for the students at, um, the therapeutic school will not look like what a normal student's day would look like. Um, we are calling it our sixty forty approach, so sixty percent of the day for the students will be focused on social and emotional learning. Um, there will be individualized and group therapeutic counseling that will take place. Uh, we will focus on mindfulness and then social and emotional instruction to improve skills. And then the other forty percent of the day would be dedicated to, excuse me, to academic instruction in the core subjects. The capacity and the dedicated space, um, we are just now prepping for some construction to take place in the very near future. We are looking at serving approximately eighty students. Approximately forty, forty of those students will be our current day treatment students, and then forty students that have been expelled, um, from their home school. They are, we'll be constructing four classrooms with dedicated calming rooms, and that's something that we carried over from the Treewind K-6 side. Um, a lot of students try to escape class for a number of reasons, and we try to provide a calming space for them to go where it's private, you know, when we have meltdowns or we're going through things, we don't all the time want an audience. And, um, sometimes that can cause a student to escalate, and so, um, we are going to provide those calming rooms in the classrooms as well. Um, there will be smart board technology, um, uh, streams, iPads, you name it, um, we're gonna really put a lot of technology into those classrooms, and then we're going to create a dedicated educational lab, both for students and staff. Some of the training that will take place over the summer, proposed training to take place over the summer, and ongoing training will include love and logic training, mindfulness training, peace circles, restorative justice, why try, de-escalation, and the power of words. Along with the sixty forty day, we are looking at providing a flexible schedule. Our proposal is to have students, um, in school from seven thirty until one o'clock daily, and then, um, after that, teachers would be provided with their thirty-minute duty-free lunch, they will be provided with, um, an encore or, excuse me, a prep time, and then they also will receive daily professional development and daily PLCs. Uh, this is the wonderful part of it, because we can't do this alone, so we already have a number of community partnerships, um, that will be involved with us, um, including the Kiwanis, the Lions Club, and, um, I want to make a side, um, note and mention Dr. Kumar, who has really been, um, leading the way for the Lions Club to become a partner, um, with this program. Uh, children's home, Unity Point Student Nurses, Unity Point Health Clinic, and, um, the program called It Takes a Village. And as usual, there is always room for additional individuals or, um, companies to partner with us, so if you're looking for a way to get involved, this is an excellent opportunity. And that's the end of our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions of, uh, Mr. Booth or Ms. Andrews? Dr. Bob?
Um, what, what are the plans for the students after one o'clock?
They will, um, be bused home.
Okay, and currently, what's their day? Do we know? How long are they in school right now?
Until two thirty.
Till two thirty, so that's, so that's a, an hour and a half. Um, is it possible, my concern is that we have children whose coping skills are already risky, um, and we're setting them loose at one o'clock. Um, and granted, that's only an hour and a half earlier than we've done before, nonetheless, um, I'm wondering if there's any way we can provide additional support for you guys? Um, uh, and I understand that, you know, we're challenged in dedication of resources, but I'm worried at one o'clock, uh, that, you know, where do these kids go, what do they do? Can we help?
Well, one of the things, because this is still, some of the things are still in discussion phase, and so even today, we were discussing, um, whether or not we could provide after-school tutoring or something like that to fill in the gap.
Well, that's prime, I agree with you, and thank you, that'd be terrific, because that's prime time, that if we can, uh, um, you know, have some academic, additional academic support somehow.
Right, and remember, these are the ones that are out completely, and so it's, um, it's an extra service that we're providing by that time, they've, they're pretty much, they've had it, they've exhausted their time, and so, um, the conversation, we, we were talking about mentoring and those sorts of things, and it will vary from kid to kid, because there's some of them that, um, would want to stay and would have taken hold on, for example, the social-emotional skills, and would like to focus more on academics so that they can graduate, and so as long as, um, you know, they're able to do that, some of them are able to, to, um, still fulfill that entire time and others are not, so, I mean, so yeah, we're obligated from seven to, to one, because we also want to provide, you have the restriction of, of providing professional development and supports for staff.
Right.
Because this is a really, really intensive group to work with, day, day in and day out. So yeah, so an idea would be maybe another group from the community collaborating and assisting from after one, and as, as Ms. Andrews said, this is, you know, it's new, it's evolving, um, but this is what we believe that they can handle within that timeframe because of, of the other, uh, offerings that we're going to provide.
Well, and some of these children are gonna be middle school age also, they're not all high schoolers, am I correct?
That's correct.
So, we've got younger kids who are now on their own at one o'clock, all the more reason for us to be mindful of how we can do some, put in some kind of support after one o'clock.
Yeah, we're going to need the support of parents.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, don't you have a, uh, contract with parents?
Yes.
For each one of these, these children, and this is where we really need to bring the parents in for a certain amount of the responsibility, because, um, our funding doesn't cover, um, the entire cost of the safe school. So, I mean, actually, we don't have to provide any services after they are expelled from school.
Right.
And the parents understand it, but I think in this case, they, they need to be partners in this, in this effort as well, if they're not already. But, but I think there's a contract or a compact that they sign, everybody signs to, as to what they are gonna be responsible for, so.
That is correct. And then also, the, the flexible schedule, uh, offers the flexibility, uh, one of the things we, we talked about is, is typically right now, when students, uh, their expulsion is up, um, they, they end the semester at the safe school, the first day at their home school, they just arrived. This flex schedule will allow us in, during the day, for those students returning to their home school, to come up and, and implement a transition plan, where our staff members, um, before the end of, let's say, first semester, takes them back to their home school, staff members can, uh, assist them with adjusting back into their home school, sit with them during classes, um, so that when the, the second semester or the new semester starts, they're just not out of one school and supposed to show up the next day and, and expect to, uh, conform to the new expectations. So flex scheduling also allows opportunities like that, those, implement these transition plans, um, flex scheduling, one of the things we, we, um, heard over and over again throughout discussions throughout the school year with the, uh, Treewind staff and day treatment staff, is the need for this, this faculty and staff to have that, uh, professional learning, uh, time, um, throughout the week, uh, and so this allows for staff, um, to also be able to incorporate that, that professional development and that training that they need to, and deal, to deal with some very intense behaviors throughout the day. And, and those students, like Dr. Kratt mentioned, that can stay longer, um, there definitely will be opportunities available for them to stay longer. Um, but visiting the safe school, there's a, many of our students, uh, are unable to make it through a full school day.
Right.
At this point, and so we wanna transition them to that point to be able to have the skills to make it through a full school day, that was also.
Mr. Sierra?
Good evening. Um, I realize that during the, um, the time that you were talking about the PowerPoint presentation, you mentioned the use of technology that will occur in the classroom. Um, my question is, what programs will the students be using on these devices to help them cope with situations? Because we find a lot of students' stress, especially at a younger age, um, rooting from technology, and a lot of students are finding ways to break down firewalls and stuff of that nature to get on other websites that, you know, technically we're not supposed to be on.
Well, these classrooms will not be large like some of our other classrooms, where we're looking at twenty-five to twenty-seven students. Um, the population will be much smaller. Um, there will be additional staff that is currently not in the WCTC Safe Schools Program, so that allows for an extra sets of eyes to, because, you know, the goal is to really build relationships with students and be able to sit and talk and, and build some of those expectations of, you know, using technology as a privilege. It's something we sign off on, um, during parent-teacher conferences and, uh, when students are being registered for school, so, um, you know, just that extra set of eyes and hands in the classroom and setting those expectations and holding students accountable for that. Um, as far as the programs go, we, like I said, we're still researching and developing this, and so that's one of the things that we're looking at, but on the academic side, we will of course continue to use, um, things like compass learning for our students.
And, and in those classes, they're small, as Ms. Andrews said, so a lot of the instruction will be done one-on-one, counseling will be conducted one-on-one of very small groups. I don't know if you, you saw, there were a slew of supports in terms of staff, counselors, therapists from children's homes, so, um, it will be very intense and deliberate.
Alright, thank you.
And just to address your concern of, um, as far as tech, inappropriate use of technology, one of the structures that are in place, that will be in place, is students are, unlike the traditional school setting, will not be allowed to have their cell phones in, uh, during the school day. That way they can focus on the treatment piece, um, and the educational piece at the, in the Treewind Therapeutic School.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, the summer school update, Ms. Gershnik?
Actually, um, in social-emotional summer school.
Oh, well, I thought he was doing that all at once, sorry. Social-emotional learning, summer school.
Yeah, no problem.
We got another presentation?
Yep, I'm gonna share with you, um...
It's short.
The SEL Summer Program, um, which is designed to assist with preparing students for high school and then inspiring them, uh, to contribute to the world. Um, our mission is, is consistent with Ms., with Ms. Andrews, uh, mentioned earlier. The goals of this SEL Summer School Program is, um, and just to mention up front, the focus is rising ninth graders, so our current eighth graders will be rising ninth graders next school year. So the goals of this program is to increase the number of freshman students on track academically. Right now, according to, um, our school report card, seventy-three percent, uh, only seventy-three percent of our students are on track at the end of their freshman year, um, and that also trickles down to, as you see, this will also assist with improving graduation rates. Uh, and the school report card also reports that sixty-nine percent of our, uh, our graduation rate currently is sixty-nine percent. So the goals of this program would definitely improve, uh, these two statistics, it will also improve the social-emotional skills of students, um, it will also assist with high school preparation. Um, many students struggle with the transition from middle school, uh, to high school, sometimes the transition from middle school to high school can be so subjective versus where high school, the expectation, uh, to move up grade levels is depending on acquiring and earning a number of credit, a cer, certain number of credits each year. The, um, in order to graduate, you have to, there's nothing subjective about it, you have to earn a certain number of credits. So this, uh, summer program will also discuss, uh, some of those preparation on, on, on your schedule, on your, your classes and the number of credits that you need, and all, and it's, and many other types of, uh, high school preparation, um, discussions. It will increase student exposure to college and careers. One of, one of the challenges, um, that, that freshmen currently have is they don't have the connection to the importance of high school as it relates to connecting that to college or career, and so we wanna give them a lot of different exposure, um, so they can make that connection immediately upon entering high school. Provide students with long-term mentors and role models, um, and we know how important to have, uh, a caring adult in your life, uh, can, can really have a positive impact on students, and then inspire students to be prepared for college or career opportunities. This is some of the who, what, when, and where. Um, again, middle school principals, um, are going to recommend rising ninth graders, um, we're targeting to, to, uh, be able to host approximately fifty to seventy-five ninth graders, and we're, uh, we use our tiered systems, our RTI tiered systems and supports, when we refer to students and we're referring, we're, we're, uh, targeting yellow, um, students, and yellow is indicator of students that, that have some risk indicators. Um, and the dates of this summer school program will be June twelfth through the July twentieth, and it's four days a week for four hours a day, nine AM to the one PM, and this will take place at Peoria High School. And again, this, this program will, um, cover three components, and the first component is social and emotional instruction, um, instruction around those five competencies, uh, self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, decision-making, and relationship skills. It will also involve mindfulness and journaling, um, give students the opportunity to, to explore journaling. And then the, the second component will be that exposure piece. A lot of times we talk about students needing the, to, the opportunity to dream, well, it's difficult to dream what you haven't seen, so we wanna provide them with visiting college campus, campuses throughout the summer so they can connect the dots, uh, get a variety of presentations by professionals and a multitude of careers, and we'll actually have the students take tours of different businesses, different careers, and different trade programs as well as part of this program. And then the third piece is that mentoring piece, and this is gonna be the most vital piece, um, for students. Uh, Dr. Kratt mentioned several months ago, uh, to her staff, that one morning, early one morning, four, five in the morning, she had to visit a hospital of a doctor, with a doctor, and they did rounds of, uh, pediatric heart patients, and even the doctor had a team of people working with them, uh, to, to assist, uh, and support the, the, the different patients, and she said, how wonderful would that be if students had those, those team of individuals to provide those services? And so this mentoring piece is, uh, one of those pieces that we can implement to provide that wraparound, and what, the roles of this, uh, of the mentor will be to progress monitor students, um, progress monitor their grades, progress monitor their attendance, their behavior, have those conversations, develop those relationships, and positive relationships and, and supports, and, and we wanna train these mentors to be an extension of the families. We want the mentors to have relationships with the parents, where the parents don't mind giving consent to these mentors, to have access to the student's family access account, where they can also assist the parents with having those discussions. Uh, the parents giving consent to the, where the mentors could be a part of their, uh, emergency contact form. You can't get ahold of mom, you can't get ahold of dad, the mentor is, is, uh, information. And so we, we're trying to make that connection of these mentors and families, uh, to, to bridge that gap, is also to have additional support for students. And we're asking for long-term commitments. Um, part of the training of mentors is to have those discussions around trauma, and one of the impacts of trauma is abandonment, and we don't want good intentions to, uh, to do any harm, so we're asking for long-term commitments. We, you know, we have a goal for the mentors to, uh, to, to walk across the stage with, with the graduates, to, uh, to, 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 to visit the, the graduates on their first day of college or their first day of career, um, and so we're asking for those long-term commitments. We have a lot of community members that are also, always asking, what can we do to help? What can we do to assist? Um, we're gonna be going to businesses and fraternities and sororities, saying this is a way that you can help, this is a way that you can assist, uh, with mentoring, uh, students. Some of our community partners, there's a list of them, Peoria Public School Foundation, they're, they're playing a big role in, in connecting us to a lot of different businesses, uh, they already do this on a daily basis through their Horizons Program in Peoria Public Schools, um, internships with employers, one of the things Carl Cannon and Lee, uh, is discussing with us is, um, building relationships so that by the student sophomore and junior year, that we, we have jobs and job opportunities and internships... And we want to train these mentors to be an extension of the families. We want the mentors to have relationships with the parents, where the parents don't mind giving consent to these mentors, to have access to the student's family access account, where they can also assist the parents with having those discussions. The parents giving consent to the mentors could be a part of their emergency contact form. You can't get ahold of mom, you can't get ahold of dad, the mentor is information. And so we're trying to make that connection of these mentors and families to bridge that gap is also to have additional support for students. And we're asking for long-term commitments. Part of the training of mentors is to have those discussions around trauma. And one of the impacts of trauma is abandonment. And we don't want good intentions to do any harm. So we're asking for long-term commitments. We, you know, we have a goal for the mentors to walk across the stage with the graduates, to visit the graduates on their first day of college or their first day of career. And so we're asking for those long-term commitments. We have a lot of community members that are also always asking, what can we do to help? What can we do to assist? We're going to be going to businesses and fraternities and sororities saying, this is a way that you can help, this is a way that you can assist with mentoring students. Some of our community partners, there's a list of them, Peoria Public School Foundation, they're playing a big role in connecting us to a lot of different businesses. They already do this on a daily basis through their Horizons program in Peoria Public Schools, internships with employers. One of the things Carl Cannon and Lee is discussing with us is building relationships so that by the student sophomore and junior year, that we have jobs and job opportunities and internships lined up for these students. Fraternities and sororities, I talked about that mentoring piece. A lot of community partners are in discussions with, willing to put funding and grant dollars behind this program to assist. Partners like the Health Department, Children's Home Association of Illinois, Police Department, and the Peoria Park District, Caterpillar, United Way. I've been in meetings with them throughout this week because they want to support this initiative as well. Any questions?
Questions about summer school, social-emotional. Yes, sir.
You didn't think you'd get away without a question.
Nah, I welcome them. I welcome them.
Can you put up the goals, the goals? There you go. Great, thank you. So increase, improve, improve. High school prep. So there, these are rising ninth graders.
Correct.
And the goal is to have the greater number of ninth graders on track academically.
Definitely.
So you have eight, and they're coming, these are eighth graders coming to you for one summer.
Yes.
So you have eighth graders for a summer, and you're going to improve the number of freshman students on track academically.
Definitely. And the key component that's going to assist with that is that mentoring piece, that progress monitoring piece. If we have those mentors with access to the student's data with the consent of the parents, that's progress monitoring, checking their grades, having those conversations with students, when the school can't get ahold of a parent and those parents consent to the mentors being a part of that contact, emergency contact, it's definitely going to be some value and increase in those areas.
So mentors are going to be the people collecting the data that will demonstrate your outcome?
Collecting the data? No. Assisting and prove the data.
So that's about, this will be an important strategy that will be utilized, especially for kids that are shaky, in addition to everything else that the schools will be doing, the district is doing, to help these kids stay on track.
Oh, yeah, no, I think I get it. And, no, I think I understand what you're doing. I'm just trying to be pragmatic.
Sure.
So if you're, if you're going to increase the number of students who are on track academically, then you have to collect data on academic track. And somebody's got to collect it, somebody's got to store it, somebody's got to evaluate it. And that's the stuff I want to know is, what's that data? You know, who's going to look at it? The same graduation rates, do we, do we have the capability to follow students that, you know, that length of time? So you've got four years. And all along the way, I see, so I'm just trying to, because these are terrific, but there's a heck of a lot going on here.
Yeah, well, we have a researcher, Dr. Torjikian. Can you talk to Dr. Bob, please?
Everything will be stored in Scott's. Everything these children do, we can check right now if a child is on track, almost at any grade level. And it's just a hand report that Scott works right there.
All of this data is, you can find even today on the Illinois School Report Card. The seventy-three percent of our students that are currently on track academically are sixty-nine percent graduation rates. And this is, this is data we collect anyway.
Okay.
Throughout our.
So you have your benchmarks.
Right.
And you know, to, when you're doing your analysis, you know that everybody else is moving along the same time you are. And you want to make sure that this program is doing what you intended to do.
Exactly.
That's right. Actually, Dr. Bob, Dr. Torjikian, you can even tag them, right? Can you tag those kids, the students in the SEL, you can tag it in the system and then you just ask the system to spit out for this group that's tagged.
Create an activity and put the children in it.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know, is that, that that's something that's going, that, it's not something we could do, but that is something we will do. We will tag these students. We do have a data collection and analysis structure in place.
Definitely.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, summer school update, Ms. Gershness. Do you have a presentation too?
Good evening. I didn't do a PowerPoint, I apologize.
Okay, no, don't apologize.
I did give you all a flyer or two for your packets, so hopefully you got those about summer school. This summer, we have programs for kindergarten through high school. Our K-2 programs will be focused on reading and math in a kind of a more traditional classroom setting with differentiation going on. And our focus is on the love of reading, especially for the summer. Our third through eighth graders are going to get more of a technology-based experience. We're going to have compass learning, some Lego robotics with some Caterpillar volunteers, and we have Comic Life. It's a, it's a software we're using where students do research and then they use the software to turn it into a comic book. So it brings in some fine arts for them. And then we're also going to work on some coding with the students in grades three through eight. In the afternoon, then, we've got more physical activities going on, soccer and tennis and some fun activities. So we have a full day experience for students. We also have an English Language Learner Summer School Program that we're doing at Glen Oak. Again, that one's always very successful. We have expanded that to high school for students who are deemed as newcomers, might be at a proficiency level that needs more support. So we're adding that this year. And then, of course, we still have our high school credit recovery program. We have our compass learning credit recovery. And then we also are trying to share an in-person English one and algebra one program for students who maybe being online might not be their thing. So we're trying kind of a blended experience here this summer. We do have, like I said, some partners. Holt is going to partner with us this summer, Junior Achievement Caterpillar. And we have, did I miss anybody? Marcy and Susan, did I miss anybody? Okay. So we also have our special education summer school going on this summer, and that's based on their students' IEPs. So we're expecting to serve around eight hundred students this summer.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gershness. And I, it's unfortunate that Mr. Knapp isn't here because I think he would have appreciated the emphasis on summer school.
Ms. Cruz, that is.
Ms. Cruz, yeah. Both of them.
He's probably watching the basketball game.
Got pinged by, you know, of course, our community members and our parents probably experiencing a little fatigue of our continual talk about the budget. So I've had a number of parents ask me, you know, where's the money come from for summer school?
Sure. Sure, we budget that in our Title I. And that's an expected expense through Title I from the federal government.
Federal government.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody like flyers? I've got some here. I'll just leave them right here.
All right, thank you. The three-tiered system survey update, Mr. Willis. Is that a presentation? Is it? I mean, do we need to move PowerPoint?
They've seen it before, right? Can you just go through it quickly?
Oh, absolutely.
Because this is not there yet. April 24th will be the.
So I mainly wanted to provide you an update. You've seen the summary report before. We've been tracking all along the responses and that kind of thing. So I'll just do a very quick drive-by. We received two thousand seven hundred fifty-eight responses, so we were close to twenty-eight hundred responses. We're very, very pleased with the number of people who provided feedback to us on that whole question of three tiers. In terms of the next several slides, the first slide basically kind of gives you a pictorial of the responses to the question, and the second slide gives you the data. And so in terms of who responded to the survey, you can see that most were parents and employees. Whoa.
Okay, that's it.
In terms of the number of students enrolled, whose behalf people responded on, most responded that they were responding on one or two students. In terms of what level, that was pretty even with those who had students at the primary level kind of inching out the other, other levels. In terms of those who responded and where did transportation fall, you know, with you, about sixty percent of the folks who completed the survey indicated that they currently aren't using transportation provided by PPS. The questions that we really monitored throughout this whole process had to do with a what-if. And here, the what-if was if the board made a decision sometime in May to implement by August of 2017, you know, where are you? Where would you be with that? And that was about break even. Forty-nine point one-nine percent responded that they feel like they could make the necessary changes to support that. Fifty point eight-one percent indicated that they couldn't. We did a little bit of a dive on what areas regarding this potential change would affect you. Before, after-school care, they ranked pretty high. And then extracurricular activities, as that related to middle school students, was another area. And you could see those responses there. Another question that we looked at pretty closely was to what degree would those changes in those areas impact you? And if you go to this particular scale, if it didn't impact you at all, that was a one. If it impacted you slightly, that was a two. Workable was three, but a challenge. And then if it would impact you significantly, it was a four. And you can see completely to the right, most of our responses fell somewhere in the two range, which, if you look at that scale, probably is more in the area of slightly and varying degrees between slightly and workable, but mostly to the slightly side. The other, the other piece is we ask an open-ended question at the end, ask for thoughts, reactions, comments, et cetera. There were about fourteen hundred twenty-five responses to that particular question. We are getting the assistance of, the Center for School Improvement is helping us analyze that, synthesize that, and provide some reactions and learnings on that particular question. We'll provide an overview of that information at the next board meeting, but wanted to at least give you an update of, at that two-week, three-week period, we had the survey open in terms of the number of responses and that kind of thing, where it landed.
Questions of Mr. Willis.
Could I see the slide? Excuse me, could I see the slide again on the one, two, three, four percentage? Yeah, is that it? Yeah.
Yes.
Not at all, slightly. And so, so to what degree would the proposed starting dismissal times impact you? And what was, what was a one? Was a one not at all?
Yes.
And a two was slightly?
Yes.
Okay. And the challenge in significantly makes up forty-seven, forty-eight percent of your respondents tell you that significantly or a challenge, but your weighted average tells you slightly. That's one of the problems of using numbers to describe categorical data. I suggest that we go back to this data, or I suggest that we look at this data as a categorical variable, not an equaliterial variable. And you'd be doing, you'd be better off doing chi-squares than you would be averages because you're misrepresenting the data, at least on that one.
Your point, Dr. Bob, is that the tails are high. So there's a lot of people that answered not at all, and there's a lot of people that answered significantly. So the middle ground doesn't, doesn't give us a whole lot of flavor.
Well, not necessarily. Not necessarily. The tails are high, but when you collapse cells in a meaningful way, i.e. challenged or significantly, then it gives you a different picture. Than the weighted average is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments? Any other comments on that?
When I looked at that data, I just, I just viewed this significantly and I saw about a third. So I said, about a third of your population is going to have a problem, so.
Right. Any other comments, Mr. Willis?
None, none other than, we did ask an open-ended question, which I think will complement the information that's here. And so we'll give you an update. And I would expect that it probably will support a lot of what you're pointing out. And so that's going to, that's going to complement what we've, what we've got, you know, with these other six or seven questions, so.
We'll bring it to you on the 24th.
Sure.
All right. So next steps, you'll bring more back on the 24th. According to the media, it's already been decided, but that was not the case. All right, you're up, Dr. Karat.
Thank you, President Ross.
For competency-based overview. And while you're at it, I believe you have an announcement also.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I need to find it. Yes, actually, today was a very positive day for Peoria Public Schools. We had State Superintendent of Education, Dr. Tony Smith, within our midst today at Manuel High School, actually Manuel Academy. And thank you to President Ross and Mr. Shaw for being in attendance. They actually unveiled, the topic was ten school districts selected to participate in Illinois's first-ever competency-based learning pilot. And there were about seven of those districts in attendance, so Chicago Public Schools, East St. Louis, Huntsley Community School District, Kanke Key was present, obviously Peoria Public School was a recipient, is, Proviso was their township high school, Ridgewood High School, Rantoul, they were in attendance, Round Lake Area School District 116, they were also in attendance, and Williamsville Community Unit School District 210 were with us. It was really beautiful. Our students from Woodruff Career Technical Center were in attendance, representing a variety of pathways from auto body, construction, culinary, manufacturing, you name it. And actually, the culinary students did a really nice job. They provided hors d'oeuvres to the guests. And I would say, Chris, there were about what, about fifty individuals in attendance? I know the media was there also. So thanks for covering it. But here are some, some thoughts, just some framing thoughts. Right now, we're witnessing a critical point in the time of education transformation. These transformative actions across the nation have the power to change the system of education. And so that's why I was really intrigued with this competency-based idea. We collectively have an extraordinary opportunity to redesign how every public school system works with students to bring their goals to life. We know that the world is changing, and we cannot continue to use old practices to fix problems. I talked about our graduation rate, and I talked about the number of our students who go into college and then the number who return second year. And we said, we're not satisfied. We want to, I referenced our vision and that we really want to serve everyone. We're not meeting the needs of everyone. We're not satisfied. And so thus, the idea of exploring the competency-based learning pilots. So I'm really excited about the opportunities. So we will be exploring, we will be, we are willing to explore and embrace new ways of doing things, again, such as competency-based learning, which is an innovative design. It involves also micro credentialing and alternative pathways and blended learning. We must be adaptable to meet the challenges ahead. And com- And competency-based, one of the things, just to kind of give you some quick background, is that it allows for more relevance and personalized learning, so that's a key point. And then another key point is that students actually can master concepts within a short period of time and move on. So there's a piece, I'm looking for a piece where actually, you know, if they're ready to move on, then just push them on, and not, you know, where time sort of remains constant and you're sitting in a classroom. You can learn your ideas in other parts of town, for example, outside of the classroom. It's all based on competencies and modules and mastering and then moving on. So in competency-based learning, educators assess and advance students based on demonstrated mastery of specific skills, abilities, and knowledge, rather than on-time, in-the-classroom learning. So we are excited. This is, and there actually, there were no dollars associated with the proposal when it was released last year, but we thought the idea was truly innovative enough to go after it. Because what it does is it also provides flexibility regarding graduation credits. So right now, we have to follow these Canegy units, four years of this, four years of, you know, English, for example, or language arts, which includes writing, three years of mathematics, two years of science, two years of social studies, and so forth. And it's specify clock hours. You have to put in X number of hours, and they're willing to be flexible in that sense. So that's really, really, really creative. And they talked about, actually, today, State Superintendent mentioned, next year, they're going to ask General Assembly for a million dollars to associate it with this initiative. This is new in Illinois, competency-based ideas, new, but it's not new, for example, in places like Massachusetts and Nevada. And where were you, Mr. Welch, last week?
Delaware.
Delaware. So we're really excited. It needs to be built by our teachers and by our community. We believe it's a nice project for alignment Peoria when we're, you know, with about ninety businesses and other stakeholders, specifically as we're thinking about internships and apprenticeships. So I'm very, very excited. So we've gone through phase one. There's still another proposal that really will get into the nitty-gritty, but, so it hasn't been fully designed yet. Again, the teachers and our stakeholders will build it and make it something that's exciting for young people.
And I believe these ten are the first cohort for this. And there is a Senate bill, or a House bill, that's been passed, changing the legislation. What was it?
That's correct.
House bill, I can't remember what it is, but it has already changed the rules around this program, and it's in law now. I couldn't remember. You remember, Mr. Shaw? I think you had left. Okay.
It was not part of my presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so your announcement.
Yeah, do you have a copy of that?
No, I need it back, too.
Chris, do you have a copy of the?
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Oh, there it is.
No, there's a paper to go with it. Okay. Thank you.
Too many papers.
There's also a sheet that the board needs to sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll find it. So just a quick announcement, Board. Peoria Public Schools, we are applying for a $3 million grant from the Department of Education to further strengthen fine arts programs offered by Roosevelt Magnet School. I know Appuratory School of the Arts at Peoria High. And the proposal is actually extremely competitive. Dr. Jenkins and Mrs. Gershmanich are working diligently on it in addition to a number of big items that we're working on, so we're multitasking. So thank you, team, for continuing to, I know you worked on Sunday and Saturday on it. It includes professional development for staff to integrate arts in the curriculum, and also for staff, professional development for staff to do co-teaching with arts professionals from the community. So that's very exciting. The proposal addresses financial needs, recruiting students to ensure diversity, and revitalizing fine arts programming. Academic learning will be intertwined with the arts throughout the school year. The professional arts, which this is a piece I'm really excited about, the professional arts community will be infused, not only through guest speakers, co-teaching, and field experiences, but also through mentoring, job shadowing, internships, thereby following the pathways model. Peoria Public, Peoria buildings such as the library, City Hall, the courthouse, local buildings, local businesses and galleries will also be asked to display our kids' work and provide space for public performances. The fine arts magnet program will be a launching pad for future art teachers. So students in grades six through twelve will be able to compose, design, choreograph pieces. They can, in turn, teach to younger students. So this leadership opportunity will allow our kids to see whether their knowledge is transferable, valued by others, and if teaching is an appropriate pathway for them. So high school students will be able to join the Grow Your Own program, and the two magnet schools will be able to really be a lab, right? So we're still working on it. It's due April seventeenth? April eleventh, oh my God. So it's right around the corner. I think we'll get down to the wire. So I had to, as part of the application process, sort of share it to the, share the information with the board, and sort of get your either thumbs up, yes, we want you to proceed with this, this is exciting for our school, or it's not a good idea. And if you say yes, I give-
We'll need the form for everyone to sign.
I'll pass the form around.
Okay.
Are we good?
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry I had to read it to you.
Mr. Brown? I did find the name of the law.
Okay.
It is the Post-Secondary and Workforce Readiness Act. It didn't say what bill number it was before it got passed.
Oh, it didn't? Okay, he said what bill number it was earlier, but I can't remember.
Fifty-seven twenty-nine.
What is it?
Fifty-seven twenty-nine.
Fifty-seven twenty-nine. It's House Bill fifty-seven twenty-nine. Great, thank you. Okay, we are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community to address the board with your comments and suggestions. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have specific personal concerns that need to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, our board members' phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person will be given five minutes to speak. The total time on any one subject shall not exceed twenty minutes without the consensus of the full board. We have also installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will collect those comments after each board meeting and compile them and share with the board and superintendent. As a reminder, no one under age eighteen may be able to address the board unless, may not be able to address the board unless accompanied by a parent guarding a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp. I don't see him, but he has a card.
At basketball games.
Okay, maybe he's outside? Is he outside the door? Okay. All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Savino Sierra.
He left.
And I think I saw him leave. Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Lisa Howell.
She's gone.
She's gone, too? Okay. So is there any response to audience presentation?
I agree with most of them.
There seems to be a pattern emerging here, to the effect that we have on speakers.
Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes for March twentieth, two thousand seventeen. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Askey?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, if you will.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Atman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Steve Saz, what is his name?
Thank you. Before we get into information items, the board, in the executive session, the board discussed items twelve and thirteen, and those items will be pulled and brought back at a later time.
Eleven, eleven and twelve.
I'm sorry.
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve. I've got it right in front of me. Eleven and twelve. So those will be pulled and brought back at a later time. Don't laugh at me. I'll get you back.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe it was psychological. Because it's expo, right? Life changer of the year award. Chris Monroe? Oh, you're doing it, sorry.
You're good, how are you guys?
Welcome.
Because I want to watch basketball, too.
I'll be as brief as I can. This spawned out of a conversation that Dr. Karat and I had about a week ago. And long story short is, one of the companies I work with is the National Life Group out of Vermont, and they have a special program for teachers, administrators, custodians, anyone that you'd like to nominate. So I gave you some information about this program. It's free. It does pay decent awards, and it really does work, so I want you to consider it. Dr. Karat and I were talking about the different ways in which I've encountered teachers, administrators, and staff when I go in through the Horizons Club, as I've been doing for four years now in all the middle schools. And we just started the high school program at Manuel this year, and it's gone very well. I just wanted to share this with you. I'd really encourage our schools to get behind it. It's a way to celebrate somebody making an extra special effort. It doesn't take a whole lot. You nominate the person online. As soon as that nomination is entered, National Life kicks in the gear. They have an entire department for this program where they send information. They send you all the literature you need for the templates you see in front of you that have press releases and the like. And if a teacher or person is chosen as a finalist, there are cash prizes for the school and the person. The five finalists, the actual five finalists, are brought to an event that I'll be at at the end of the month in Naples at the Ritz-Carlton, where they're celebrated, they're brought out in front of everybody, and a grand finalist wins up to ten, well, $10,000 prize. Included in that is called the Spirit Award, and I think that's what got my attention most for Peoria Public Schools, because they're great. I meet a lot of great teachers. I've seen a lot of them here, some of the principals. I don't think they get enough recognition, frankly. So I said the Spirit Award would be great, where the school itself can win money in addition to the nominee, and the nominee doesn't have to be a finalist to win this. But if we get a school behind one of these folks that we nominate and show the most spirit, the school itself gets recognition, too. So I just wanted to share that with you. My contact information is somewhere in here, and if it's not, I'll give it to you. I thought I put it on there, but I guess not. Maybe it's on yours, it's not on my copy.
It's on, it's on.
Oh, good, my son gave you the right copy today. But I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, if you have any, but I just wanted to share that program with the board.
Any questions of Mr. Monroe? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll follow up.
Thanks. And just so you'll know, the nominations are accepted coming up, May first.
Yeah, they start May first, and they go all the way through December.
To December, okay, okay. So it's not May first and December thirty-first, it's all the way through.
They start in the spring to get momentum in the spring, and then they carry through.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Habitat for Humanity, Richwoods Chapter overview. Is Kathy Morton still here? Hello, Ms. Morton, how are you?
All right, my name's Kathy Morton from Richwoods High School. This is Leah Schmickel from the Peoria affiliate of Habitat for Humanity, and Skylar Harlow, a rising senior at Richwoods, who will be the first student president of the chapter.
Could you step up to the mic for a second?
Sorry. There we go. It's better. All right. Thank you, Dr. Karat, President Ross, board members, for having us here today. So I am pleased to announce that Richwoods is in the final stages of establishing a campus chapter of Habitat for Humanity. Once we are done, we will be the eighty-fifth high school in the nation, the fourth in the state of Illinois, and the only downstate high school to have a campus chapter for Habitat for Humanity, demonstrating once again that Richwoods is the standard of excellence of high schools in the state and in the nation. At this point, I would like to thank Brett Elliott, who had to leave, and Chris Copeland and Rick Redbird for the help that they have been to getting this set up and actually established. And we're in the final, last little stages of getting it fully chartered. Most people think of Habitat for Humanity as an organization that builds houses, and they don't know much more about it. But Habitat is much more. They have four basic principles that they work under: direct service, education, advocacy, as well as volunteering. And the students at Richwoods will be participating in all of those activities. Direct service includes beyond just the building of houses, volunteering at the restores. They can work with other areas in the community. For education, they would be working within the community to educate students as well as people about just the need for affordable housing and just what Habitat stands for. They would be able to advocate with local and state elected officials on the need for affordable housing and to try to help get legislation passed to help in that area. And then also fundraising on the local level and with the national affiliate as well. And with that, they would be able to partner with Bradley University and the campus chapter at Bradley as well. I'm trying to think what their, I think that's... Students will have a lot of opportunities to participate in leadership. Some of the things that we're looking at beyond just in those areas, eventually, we would like the students to be able to go on mission trips out of Peoria and over summer vacations or spring break. And our biggest goal is we would like to have the Richwoods chapter raise enough funds where they can actually sponsor an all-youth build for the city of Peoria. So that's our big, long-term goal. We're hoping in about a year and a half or so. All right, and then I'd like to have Leah take the mic. She's going to talk a little bit about how we will work with the Peoria affiliate.
Thank you for letting us be here. It's always wonderful to have a teacher or someone from the community come to us. We're always out asking for people to support our cause. But I want to give Kathy a real round of applause for doing this and coming to us and being really assertive and let us get going on this, because I will tell you that Habitat for Humanity is very good at building houses, but the one thing we have been lacking, I think, is youth involvement. And that's a lot of times because people are afraid to have youth on build sites, but we don't use power tools all the time. That's just a very small part of the plan. But what we're going to do is we're going to set up a board structure, so we'll have a president and vice president, and get that started. And then we also would like to have the opportunity like you're doing now and have the students be able to participate as youth board members for Habitat for Humanity. And then we also are going to work with the schools. Hopefully, we're going to try to set a strategic plan over the next few years, reach out to the high schools, and see if we can do a youth leadership, some sort of a youth leadership conference, based on just getting the youth involved in some sort of volunteer work. And we also, at the state level and at the international level, we do have opportunities for the students to go and learn one-on-one about leadership skills, organizational skills. And we just appreciate this. We're so excited. And as soon as the chapter gets started, the students are welcome to work this summer and help us build, but it's going to be more than just the building. And I think they'll find the best part of all of this is meeting the families that are going to be purchasing these homes, working side by side with them, and really realizing that these people want to be able to be self-sufficient, own their own home, and be able to have something to call their own. And so we're trying to make affordable housing an important issue with our legislature and let people know that we can't have people in our community, we need to give them the ability to get ahead, but they're not going to get ahead if they're paying eighty percent of their paycheck on rent. And so we work with people to get them out of that, but we can only do it one house at a time. So we're doing improvements now, and we just appreciate you letting the school be involved with us, and we're going to try to get more schools in the future, and we're very excited about this. And we hope we can come back next year and tell you about our house that we're going to be building and all the successes we've had. to be building and all the successes we've had with the students.
Skylar, would you like to say a few words?
Um, I guess. Hi, I'm Skylar Harlow. I'm a junior now, but I'll be a senior next year. I'm president, obviously, that's been said. Well, Ms. Morton approached me in the hall and asked if I wanted to be the president, and I thought about it, and I was really excited about it because I've lived such a privileged life, so I want to help people who aren't as privileged, so I just want to, you know, help and such. I don't know what else to say.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Any questions on Habitat?
So when you do get that first big project lined up, you're more than welcome to come back, and a few of us board members will, you know, take out our work clothes.
Thank you.
Remember who said that?
I'll remember. I do want to comment too, that we have reached out to the trade programs at the other high schools, and we have invited them to have their students. So even though it's the Richwoods chapter, we are willing to have the students at Peoria High, Manuel, and Woodruff and their trade programs participate in our activities as well.
Great, thank you. Proposed expenditures.
Ms. Jackson.
Oh, Ms. Jackson.
I would like to say, I am just so proud of our students, because the students at Peoria Public Schools are working and giving all over this community. So I just want to say thank you for stepping up to the plate and leading this charge to build a house. And I'm sure those of us that's sitting around the table probably can't drive a nail straight, but we can be a lot of support in so many different ways, so thank you for taking over.
We did forget to tell you that we are going to have internships available. I talked to Brent Baker, and we are going to have internships available all summer for students that want to come, and they can either learn about our construction part. If they'd like to learn about the retail part, they're welcome to work at our restores. Or if they want to be back in the admin, we can talk about our organizational leadership that we use to get volunteers and how we do marketing. So we're hoping to work with students to come in and do internships as well.
Can you send an email to me, please?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Walter, here.
I just wanted to say thank you too for the student involvement, for, I think Habitat for Humanity is a wonderful thing, and I appreciate you guys being part of this, and actually, Peoria Public Schools being part of it. So I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you. Proposed expenditures, over $2,500. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Willis? Seeing none, report a request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request. Dr. Krot?
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on March 20th, we've received one new request. This request is still pending. There were also one pending request noted on March 20th. This one was filled. To date, we have received 16 requests for this calendar school year at a cost of $6,144 even. Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda.
Yes, and just to repeat, if anybody was out of the room when we did it, items 11 and 12 are going to be pulled to be brought back at another time, so I'm going to intentionally skip two numbers. The consent agenda tonight consists of the following items. Item number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting, $4,035. Year-to-date, $198,928.13. Item number two, the payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item four, human resources report. Item five, the adoption of amended board policy 4:152. Item number six, the adoption of amended board policy 6:300, minimum high school graduation requirements. Item number seven, the high school graduation plan adoption. Item number eight, the 2018-2019 school calendars. Item number nine, the field trip approval for Woodruff Career and Technical Center to Indianapolis, Indiana. Item number 10, the field trip approval for Peoria High School Cheerleading. Item number 13, the settlement agreement for Peoria Public Schools, the Exposition Gardens Incorporated, Circuit Court of Peoria County, case number 15-C-H-195. Item number 14 is the ratification of a labor contract with the Peoria Federation of Support Staff, Security, Policemen's Benevolent and Protective Association, unit number 114. And item number 15, MOU with the Peoria City County Health Department. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda for tonight.
Are there any items any board member would like pulled for a separate conversation or vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Should please call for a roll.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Haskins?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Avila?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do that on the presentations, okay? Deliberation agenda, the expulsions.
Proposed action that the expulsions listed on the report dated April 3, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Haskins?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Avila?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Okay, deliberation agenda, the expulsions.
Proposed action that the expulsions listed on the report dated April 3, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Haskins?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Avila?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
That the revocation of expulsion held in abeyance be listed on the report April 3, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Haskins?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Avila?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by audience, by board members. Dr. Krot has an announcement, another announcement.
Thank you, President Ross. I just wanted to introduce one of our new hires that you just voted on. Dr. Wilson, I would like to ask her to come to the podium, please. I would like to actually present her to you. Dr. Wilson is, we believe, perfectly fit for the AIO position. You know that Dr. Jenkins will be retiring, and we have that position that is open, that will really be over the elementary schools, elementary staff and administration, teachers and et cetera. Her resume is really impressive. It shows great academic credentials. And here are a couple of things. Dr. Wilson has served as an instructional support specialist for two years, and that's how, actually, and she's currently working with our school district, doing amazing work. And she has also been assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction in Normal, Illinois for three years. She has also been for four years director of secondary education in Normal, so that's high school. Also, she has been a middle school principal in Charleston, Illinois for five years. She's also been for four years an assistant principal, elementary at the elementary level, a teacher at the elementary level, not only in Charleston but in Normal and in Hayworth. So she's done it all, as you can, as you've heard.
Or been around, whichever one you want to say.
So why don't you, let's, we're happy that you, I'm happy you selected Peoria Public Schools. I'm just really happy and ecstatic. I'm looking forward to working with you and the rest of the team. And so, why don't you make a few remarks? Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. And prepare, I should have known better, for Dr. Krot, so. I, this has become a second home for me, working with Illinois Center for School Improvement. I consider these folks sitting here and the administrators that I know family. So Susan Cleese-Sath and I spend a lot of time here almost every day. So coming to work next year will be no different, because I drive here almost daily anyway. So I've enjoyed working and getting to know the possibilities, the fertile ground, and all of the exciting initiatives. I have had experience in districts like yourself that are innovative, visionary, and I tend to thrive in those kinds of environments. So Peoria seems like a perfect fit for me. I have big shoes to fill, because working with Tanya, I know that she's worked so hard and done so many great things. So I promise to work hard for you and to continue the great tradition that has been established here, and so hopefully we'll see each other many times next year. So thank you again for this opportunity, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Any other suggestions?
I have a quick question. What grade did you teach?
Second grade, 13 years in three different locations. Yes.
Did anyone else have any comments or suggestions by board? You know, as I, and I'm probably stepping out on a limb here. Somebody catch me if I am. You know, as I think about the issue with transportation, and I said in previous, at a previous meeting, that there are some, there are some areas, cities and states that don't provide transportation for children to get to school. And so I'm wondering how our parents can partner with us. And I know at one point, if my children were not within the mile and a half that they were, you know, would receive free transportation, we were able to, we would have to pay a certain amount for them to ride the bus to the school. And so, I mean, it's just, I'm just throwing it out there. If we can get our parents to partner with us and pay that, whatever that amount is for each child that, for each household that rides the bus, I mean, maybe not each child, because they may have four or five children, but one fee for the bus transportation, I think it would probably develop a better understanding and also value to the cost that it, that we incur to try to make sure kids, you know, have a school bus to school. So that's just a suggestion, and I'm throwing it out there to see if there's something that, you know, at least we could, we could ask them. We assume that people are not able to afford certain things, but some things that we think they're not able to afford, they do afford. And so, you know, we need to make parents partners in this endeavor to educate the children. And I just think that they would value, you know, doing something like that.
Mr. Ross, do you have any idea of what the cost could be for parents?
Well, at one...
And what that duration, is that for a year?
A year. At one point, we were talking, I saw on the screen, $105.
For a year?
For a year.
Would that be per family? It's for per family or per child?
Well, I would think...
I can tell you how...
Okay.
$105.
Sure, okay.
I just took the deficit in transportation divided it roughly by the number of students. And so that gives you the deficit per student, which is $105. So if a family can't afford, would be 105 times four. If a family can't afford, it'd be 105 times four.
Okay, I didn't know if it was...
Okay.
Right, right. So that's what I was thinking, because if they rode more than one bus, I could see that. But again, you know, if we, I mean, parents and families want, people want us to make it convenient for them, but how can they partner to help make this, come up with this cost?
And this is all...
Go ahead.
This would only be for families that are within the mile and a half?
No, this is for every child that rides a school bus.
Every child rides a bus, okay.
Every child that rides a school bus.
I think that there was a scale, because my children were not within a mile and a half, and I paid for them to ride the bus.
Yeah, I think it was like $80.
But it was like $80 for them to ride. But also, I ended up, some parents in the neighborhood, we carpooled, so every two months it was my turn to take all the kids to school. And we were like a mile from school, but when it's cold and stuff, we just decided, there were no sidewalks, and we would do that. So that could be one of the things that parents could work together and partner with.
Yeah, either that or, as I said, we're talking about per year. I mean, I think that, I think that we have to raise the awareness and the bar for parents as well, you know, to help partner with the school district. That's my two cents worth. Any other suggestions or...
Suggestions to...
Suggestions...
To what you're speaking of, or otherwise?
Well, no, any suggestions for, from board members on how to make things? Input or suggestions? Anyone else? All right. Ms. Adler?
Before I move to adjourn, the Buildings Committee will meet Wednesday at 8:00 AM to talk about Peoria Stadium and a number of other building-related issues, so.
That's what I was talking about.
8:00 AM over here in the media room.
On Saturday, myself, Ms. Ross, Dr. Krot, had the opportunity to attend the cosmetology barber...
Extravaganza, I call it, showcase.
Showcase. And it was really, I think every year it gets better and better. This year, it was phenomenal. There were a lot of vendors there, and these young people do an outstanding job. And one great thing about it is that they all seem to enjoy what they're doing, and that makes it easier for them. When they like what they're doing, it shows in the product that they are producing. And these kids are doing a wonderful job down there in that class. So kudos to the cosmetology and barbering courses down there.
And don't forget the culinary, because they had the snack bar.
Oh, the culinary, I'm sorry, yeah, they had, they had some, they had some really good food. I had the pork chops. It was good.
Yes, sir.
The Policy Committee will meet April 19th at 9:30.
Did you have your hand up, Mr. Sierra?
Oh, no, I'll go.
Okay.
I'm not taking you to an auction.
I'm as it we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?